Okay.
Okay, then let's call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And stand for our pledge.
I don't believe the pledge is on the agenda.
Okay, then we will skip the pledge. And move, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda, second.
Okay, and I need a roll call vote since we're remote.
Sean Nichols, nine.
Bill Duzetter, I.
Eric Brown, I.
Dorothy Scally, I.
Vicki Ludwigson, I.
And Carrie Lawrence, I. The agenda is approved for tonight. And we're going to jump into our first agenda item, which is a discussion regarding the fiscal year 2022 Mersey operational budget with objectives for tonight being to review what we learned at the amended select board meeting last night, to review the new budget information that we have at our disposal and to discuss our priorities as we move forward in the budget process. So if we could start the conversation with having somebody who was present last night, maybe talk about what happened at the select board meeting?
I can start if anybody wants to chip in, they can. Um, I think, I think the the, the general feeling we, we got from the, from the select committee, if I would put it in a nutshell, I believe that we as a school committee were looking for some sort of number that the select or the select board could live with in terms of their budget. And we didn't get that really, we got, we got a request to come up with our number, so um, there's a bunch of, of, I, I don't know how to characterize it very well, but there's a lot of posturing going on and I, I have a feeling that, that we're not getting a, getting an honest answer from, from the town amendment. I was expecting a little bit more from the phone call in that regard. Specifically, you know, I, I still haven't seen an explanation for why, you know, effectively the town's budget is moving beyond splitting the 50/50, the two and a half percent under the levy increase. The town is beyond, going beyond splitting that with the school district in a very challenging year for both of us. And they're moving to take that entire sum themselves, which constitutes essentially a 5% increase, well beyond what a lot of them have told me the school should stay within in order to manage their own budget. So I'm confused as to why they're claiming so much of the, of the under the limit money. And I'm not sure they're really bargaining in good faith. So I, I believe, I believe, you know, their request was for us to come up with a number that is an honest number that the school can live with for the next year, and I, I believe that's, that's probably what we should do. Anybody else's feedback would be appreciated.
I can probably add to that, I guess, a little bit. I, I think, you know, the impression I got last night is that the select board is looking to the school committee to certify a budget that has a number in it. And that's when they're going to start to look at whether they can match any of those reductions or not. I personally, I guess I understand that to a point, I'd kind of hope that we would have gotten last night. You know, if the number is this, we will have to cut this, so we at least had some discussion on that, we didn't really get to that point. But I think ultimately, they're looking for the school committee to give them a number and then they're going to work on how they can potentially fund it. So I would agree with Sean, I think we're at a point now where we need to say, you know, this is the budget we can work with, this is the budget we can live with. This is what it's going to cost each town, and then it's again up to the towns, and in this case, it's really just a town amendment. It's really up to them to decide whether they can fund it or not, and if they think they can do something with that and take it to a special town meeting, great. If they feel they can't, then we go to the joint town meeting and that's where we have to deal with it at that level. But I feel like we need, at this point, I think it's up to the school committee now to kick the can, send it back their way with this is the number, what are we going to do?
It's an interesting approach. I guess we got to just focus on getting our select board's numbers for the joint town meeting. You know, going back to the information we have today, what we're doing in terms of, you know, moving. And then if the amendment, like, forty, something or not, you know, they'll have to create a.
Somebody's got some feedback coming through on their mics. So I guess I would recommend that if you're not speaking, mute yourself.
Hey Joe, it looks like it's coming through your line, when other people speak, your microphone's lighting up as well.
Okay, I'll mute myself, sorry about that.
So just so I understand, I did watch, I mean, this morning I watched part of the rerun, I'll call it, and I didn't watch all of it, but did they ever get to a point where they indicated anything in terms of their ability to fund any additional amount at all, or?
Yeah, yes, they did. I think, I think there's a willingness on the board from the select board and a real, you know, a realization that we're at a point where they're going to have to fund something above what was appropriated at the annual town meeting. They basically said 150,000 was really what, that's what they have without making cuts. My guess, and I don't know this for a fact, but maybe, you know, Mark or somebody that's on the call could answer it, is that of the 630 or 635,000, that was two and a half levy of new growth, they didn't need 100% of it, they needed, you know, up to like 150,000 left, so they still have a little bit of leeway there. Other than that, they basically said, that's where we're comfortable, if the number's higher than that, then tell us what it is and we'll figure out how we can get there, that's what I took out of last night's meeting. You know, so I definitely think there's an interest in compromising, I definitely think that there is an interest from the select board to avoid a joint town meeting and see if we can come to some kind of compromise resolution. The question is, what does that do to town services? And I expressed to them pretty clearly last night. It is not the intent, at least this is my opinion, so I maybe I shouldn't be speaking for everybody. It is not our intention to devastate the town amendment and have them close to departments like shutting down the library or the senior center, that's not our goal. Our goal is to get the school district funded at an appropriate level to deliver services to the students that they need. And at the same time, Mendon has to figure out how to deal with that.
Well, I guess, I guess we could go into the numbers bluntly, I think. A posture of saying they're, any kind of request is going to decimate town services and Mendon is really irresponsible. Because I think as you look at the numbers, you look at the pieces, they don't need to do that, they don't even need to come close to it. So, we can, we'll let, why don't we jump into our own budget, because I think it's important for us to, because we're, we're getting to a number anyways, whether it's and it can fund it or not, it's, you know, with clarity and the updates that we have, I think we've got to get, we're going to be updating our number anyway, so.
I agree with that.
Agreed. Okay, so we'll move forward with discussing some of the new information we have in terms of the budget then?
Sure, I, I'd be happy, what I've done is I've just put together some slides to help inform your conversation, okay? Let me just do a quick share here. You guys can see that, correct?
Yeah.
Just a note, because I think Mark Reel is in the chat. And he said that he's happy to provide some additional, I guess, perspective.
What I can do, do you want to hear from Mark first? Here, what I'll do is I will promote Mark to panelist.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Mark.
How's it going? So, I do want to just provide some clarity, because they think it's important that the entire committee understands that we're all in a, in a position of frustration, right? But the reality is, we all want to get to a point where we are communicating clearly and we're working together towards a resolution that's, that's going to be a multi-year process, right? We're not going to solve this, this during this budget cycle. And so last week, I asked for a meeting, we had a brief meeting between the Mendon administration, Upton administration and school administration, because I felt that it was important to open the understanding that Mendon is, is wanting to have a conversation before getting to a joint town meeting. I don't think any of us want to get to that point. And so last night's meeting was really for Mendon getting the select board on the same page as to whether or not there's openness to making cuts to our existing budget in order to find a resolution this year and then immediately begin conversations for FY23's budget, understanding that both Mendon and the, the regional school district would have to make some cuts that aren't as drastic as the cuts that could happen from a joint town meeting. And so I, I think Mr. Duzetter had mentioned that any number is going to negatively impact Mendon's budget, and that is correct. And we understand that. But there is a willingness to to get to that point without being 800,000, right? Because 800,000 means a lot different scenario than a different number. And so I know that, that, that there was a request for Mendon to come up with a number. But I think there, it's not that we're not willing to. The point that we're, we're making is that basically almost any number above a zero is cuts. So we're saying to, to the school committee that we're, we're here, we're ready to work with you. What is, what is the number that you're looking at that's still being, still meaning cuts for your budget? But is something that you're able to float through next year while keeping in mind that Mendon will also be making cuts that hopefully special town meeting as opposed to going through the joint town meeting process, so. The other piece I want to mention, and I, I may have mentioned it to all of you before, but early on in our budget process, we understood that essentially providing the typical half of new growth number to the school would not allow Mendon, our town budget, to remain level service. And so we saw that it was clear that the budget asked from, from you folks was going to be something that we would need to go to an override for regardless. And that's why that number was lumped into the override, because that would allow us to keep level service. And then also a passage of the override would provide for the funding of the regional school district budget. So, excuse me, just wanted to provide that to you and leave you with that, happy to answer questions as you go along.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate your feedback. Do we have any questions from the committee?
Not at this time.
Okay, then if we could go ahead then and review, review our numbers?
Sure, so let me provide an update, the good news is, you know, some things have happened within the last couple of weeks that bode it favorable in, you know, solving this puzzle, and I think it's a puzzle that has multiple pieces to it. So where we are today, as all of you know, the last time that we met last week, the established joint town meeting date is Saturday, August 7th. And there has been some conversation, and, and I know that this came up a couple of meetings ago, as far as the language that is actually in the law about, you know, the, the verb shall being used for the imperative when there still is not a consensus between two communities to go to a joint town meeting. However, we have gotten legal opinion from our district legal counsel, Mike Long, who's basically said, look, you know, yeah, it is the, it is the law that, you know, there is an imperative to go. However, there's nothing that precludes the district from brokering a compromise with any of the communities that make it up and then recertifying the budget and accepting that. So we talked, and I'm glad Mark was here to provide a little insight on last night. I think what's been represented is pretty accurate as far as talking about what additional funds were and so on. So I, I want to provide what has changed in the last couple of weeks and then provide for the committee a model of what you could proceed with in brokering a compromise. So as you know, and this year is no exception, in non-COVID years, our legislature has been pretty slow in approving a final, in finalizing a state budget. So right now, as you know, the process goes governor's budget, House, I'm sorry, yeah, House budget, Senate budget, then conference committee, and then it's signed by the governor. So we're at the place now that, just last week, the conference committee budget was approved, it's on Governor Baker's desk. The good news is, in that final conference committee budget, we picked up 185,027 dollars in regional transportation reimbursement. So keep in mind, when we're, we're going through this process and you're certifying in May, it's still early. And you see the amount there in the governor's initial budget proposal, it was actually lower than our FY21 allocation. So through the process, we picked up money in the House, but then we lost it in the Senate, but then we regained, we regained it in the conference committee budget. Assuming that Governor Baker does not line item veto or reject that, we will see that increase of 185,027 dollars. We also have, and I'd like to publicly thank Mike Moroly for, you know, giving us the heads up on this, but there are, and I'm going to talk a lot about this, a lot of additional grant threads that are out there, and one that was out there was a summer school expansion in engagement matching grant. And this is something that Maureen, in a very, very quick turnaround, like something like two or three days, wrote. And we got the word literally four or five days ago that we picked up an additional 100,000 dollars. Now, mind you, this is 100,000 dollars that we had in our operational budget to address learning loss for our students. And, and again, as we've discussed in previous school committee meetings, we have a pretty aggressive summer school program. So this is an additional 100,000 that we've picked up. So as we typically do during the month of July, we close out our books for, on FY21. And we see where savings may be applied to the following fiscal year, or we use them towards special projects and so on. So what we're finding is we've had some additional significant savings in special education and transportation, and specifically, I, I really want to hone in on special education transportation. Keep in mind that we spend quite a bit of money, well over a million dollars on our students who have out of district placements. Keep in mind that also, a lot of those placements were in remote or also had a hybrid schedule during the course of this year. So as a result, we're seeing savings there, and we're also seeing savings in our regular transportation contract, because keep in mind, on Wednesdays for a significant chunk of the school year, our, our students were full remote. Secondly, we've talked, and I know Jay has talked about the various grants that we've gone for, some have been entitlement. Some have been grants that were competitive in nature. But if you were to sum up things like this, the coronavirus relief act, SER-1, remote learning tech, one state earmark from Senator Moore, and sum them together, and the majority of which of these grants need to be completely expended by the end of FY22 or FY23, it's about 90,000 dollars. And then we've talked amongst, we've talked at the committee level about the American Recovery Act. And specifically, it's known as SER-3 for schools. We've talked about how the towns have received an allocation and the regional school district has received an allocation. That allocation has to be spent out over the next three fiscal years. If we were to take a look at our allocation, I believe it's in the ballpark of around 460, 468,000, and applying about 50% of it to the coming fiscal year, so that would be roughly 230,000. So in kind of looking at what could be a recertification model, and, and I'd like to walk you through this table. You see in that top row what our certified budget has been at, 39,990,339. And the additional assessment to Mendon that we've discussed with the failed override of a little over 803,000, and then the nearly 1.5 million from Upton, which was approved at town meeting. If you were to apply that 185,000 to 185,000 to our two communities and include it as an additional strand of state revenue, which it is, you see the Mendon additional assessment goes down to 721,260, and then Upton is at almost 1.4 million. And then for the sake of argument, reducing our budget or providing those grant funds or their savings to the tune of 900,000 dollars, and, and I'll talk about that again. It would get that additional assessment to the town of Mendon to 320,335 dollars and to Upton, 881,316. So again, in talking about 900,000 dollars in gap, of gap, again, to talk about how do you make up that gap? Again, I want to reiterate the things that I just enumerated. The summer school expansion grant, which is not included as revenue in our current operational budget. Rolling over those sped and transportation savings of 150,000, those previous, most of which were FY20 coronavirus grants of 90,000. That application of, again, that one-time money, that SER-3 money of 230,000. And if you recall, we talked about some of the other non-staff cuts that could be implemented, and specifically, we talked about a savings of approximately 25,000 dollars from Norfolk Aggie from one less tuition that we would have to take on. We talked about some, some cuts to technology and textbook lines and so on. Those sum about 61,500, so that gets you about 631,500 dollars. So therefore, to get to, to close to that gap in this scenario of 900,000, the district would have to sustain a total of 268,500 dollars of additional cuts or efficiencies needed to be sustained. So that would, under this model, get you to that number of an additional assessment to the town of Mendon being 320,335 dollars over the current fiscal year. So again, noting well, and again, I've heard the expression being used, you know, here at the regional school committee level, but also on the town side about, you know, the proverbial kicking the can down the road. And obviously, much of the gap in this scenario that I've just presented to you would be filling that gap with one-time grant money, you know, grant money that we've realized due to the coronavirus crisis that we've been in over the last, you know, 17 months or so. So that's a concern, and obviously, you know, filling that gap does create a a structural deficit in our FY23 budget. But I think we are on the same page in, in, in saying that, okay, we could do this, we could do this to fill the gap, but we very much will need a collaborative approach with the regional school district, the town of Mendon, and yes, also the town of Upton for the next fiscal year and beyond that. And again, what I'm presenting to you is one model that I think is a viable solution. And I presented to you because, again, I think we need to have a sense of urgency. That, you know, today is July 15th, and we literally will be starting school in the matter of six weeks, and we still have 18 people out there on layoff. We want to make plans. In some cases, we're going to have to replace people, and right now, we're at a standstill. So I think having a resolution and a game plan sooner rather than later would serve us very well. So that's what I have, Carrie.
Thanks, Joe, I appreciate you putting that together. Discussion from the committee?
Well, I, I agree that we need a resolution and a game plan very quickly. So may I propose that we, we have a chance to digest this and get the resolutions printed out very quickly, maybe have another meeting on Monday or Tuesday to recertify the budget?
What does that do to us in terms of timelines that we already have set in motion in terms of special town meetings, in terms of joint town meetings? Would we still be able to do that without changing any of those dates?
My impression is that we will be able to do that.
Okay.
It would be it would be essentially two, two weeks and five days beyond the time when we certify the budget, if we did it on Monday.
Yes, the, the question I have, and I see Mark has his hand up, which is, maybe he's got the number. Because I, the question I would have is, we adjusted in the way we outlined, which I think a lot of diligence and thought has gone into. But how, I mean, isn't even a number that Mendon can work, make happen? So maybe it's better to let Mark speak for a minute to that point.
Can I just make a comment or ask a question first?
Yeah.
Just, can you just, what the 286,8000 in additional cuts, can you just talk for a minute about what that might look like? I mean, what, what are those cuts potentially?
That's a great question. And I think that spelling that out in certain terms could be the next meeting. You know, again, to the point, I'm just, again, part of what I laid out for you this evening represents kind of a mathematical exercise in being transparent about the use of these grant funds. And again, as we typically do during the month of July, close our books for the previous fiscal year. So do I have some ideas of what that would look like? I do. I think I first want to speak with our leadership team and so on, and before presenting a coherent whole. I do think, quite frankly, though, to Vicki and the rest of the committee, realize we have a significant amount of cuts that we've made right now, again, 2.1 million dollars worth of cuts, or the elimination of 28.2 positions. So obviously, you know, getting down to that 200, you know, in 80, 268 number is a lot easier than where we are right now. And it may come down to, you know, again, attrition and losing positions where we've had, you know, retirements and so on, and just not filling those. But at this point in time, I, you know, I can't say, okay, that's going to represent exactly 5.0 FTEs or something like that. I could give you estimation. But again, to Sean's point, I think we would be really well served to digest this for a little bit. And then, you know, literally within the next couple of days to connect with the leadership team, you know, with our administration to kind of model out even further what that looks like. And again, part of this is also around prioritizing our needs. I'm fully cognizant that this committee, and we've talked about the imperative nature of coming out of the pandemic and what the critical positions would be, particularly with regard to mental health services. So this may also involve some reshuffling and re-prioritizing and reallocation of where we're putting our resources for specific positions.
Okay. Mark, you have your hand up. I don't. Only guy can recognize him. Joe, can you recognize him?
I'm, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. So I just wanted to address a couple of things. One is the timing of the joint town meeting. I mean, I think that if we can manage to accomplish the budget request through our own special town meeting, which is the path that I personally would like to see happen, we would need a little extra time before a joint town meeting is, if we could push the joint town meeting out slightly, that would be helpful in getting the timeline of scheduling a special town meeting in Mendon and providing enough time for notification of the public so that we could do it properly, right? I understand that pushing the joint town meeting out is not something that all of you folks wanted to do, wanted to have it done as soon as possible. But if we're able to get this done through a special town meeting and not have the joint town meeting at all, then that won't even be an issue. I think there was a question about the number that's been presented and whether or not it's even something Mendon is willing to do. I can't obviously speak for the board of select, or the select board in Mendon, but, I mean, 803,000 versus 320 is quite a different situation. And so I think the board would be willing to have that conversation. And I think it's what we've, it's a, it's a great place to be starting. And that may be the end too. I just don't, I'm not in a position where I can say definitively. And I don't want that to be discouraging. I want to be clear that I just can't say yes or no.
No, I can understand, Mark, that you can't speak for the rest of the committee. But I guess my question would be is, when would be the next meeting of the committee where a discussion about this number could take place?
I think we're prepared to meet as quickly as, as possible.
Okay. And then I think what, what we would do is maybe I would, I would suggest giving, you know, Joe, you and Maureen and the team, the leadership team, the time, I mean, we don't need a lot of time, but maybe we push instead of Monday or Tuesday, we're doing something like Thursday of next week where we can get together in terms of the pieces and, you know, be able to go through those cuts and other efficiencies and items. If that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the delay there, but I understand, I understand the need to move it. Is it possible to do it any earlier?
It's always possible. I think part of it is getting some feedback from the perspective of the Mendon Select Board about their ability to work with the number we just put out there. As to what Mark said, which I will agree, it is a significant reduction. I know we, you know, ended the year better than we thought we would. I know we have additional funds in other areas that we can actually utilize from the federal government with clarity around A R P. It's been a question I've always been asked about why, you know, why aren't we using our one-time funds when we've asked the towns to as well?
Carrie? I would, I would recommend that if we could go forward to meet at the beginning of next week and have that number. I know from the leadership team perspective, perspective, we'd be able to come forward with more information. I think that would allow the Mendon Select Board a little bit more time to plan out when they can have that meeting as opposed to waiting all the way towards, you know, towards the end of the week.
Okay. Well, I think the only reason we'd want to delay it to the end of the week was if, was if your team needed more time to, to put that together. But if you feel like you can realistically do it by the beginning of the week, I think I'm feeling the urgency from everybody involved with all of this, that if we can do it sooner rather than later, I think that's better. So as a, as a committee then, are, do we have even availability? Could we get a quorum of us together early next week?
You can always get a quorum. I guess the question is, Mark, will that be the time you need or the Select Board? Because I think going into that meeting to have an answer will be a fair piece of information as well, or at least.
You know, I'm not sure how you all feel, but do you think it would be possible to try to schedule something jointly where the school committee could vote on a number? Or we could all have the discussion before vote, before the school committee votes? And then should the school committee vote on, say, this 320 number, the Select Board could then schedule the special term meeting and we could all kind of get it done.
If I could respond. Mark, that, that sounds great, but with the best of intentions, I think meetings tend to go south between us. I don't know why that is, but if there's, if there's a way that we could have some sort of a definitive number that you guys can work with and then and then move on from there, I think it would be more conducive to agreement and consensus if we could have separate meetings. That's my feeling.
Can I make a suggestion? If I could, if the school committee could meet a next Monday night, this, you know, you've got the weekend now to go through all this stuff. If they could meet again on Monday or at the latest on Tuesday, recertify the budget, need to get sent to the towns immediately afterwards, but the next morning. If the Select Board had a meeting scheduled for, say, Wednesday, they then need 14 days to have a special town meeting. So they've got to do some, they've got some things they have to do, but that pushes a special town meeting in Mendon probably to the first week of August toward the end. So it may mean that you might have to push your joint town meeting out like one week from the 7th to the 14th. But that would be the worst case scenario. And it still gets it done relatively quickly because you could have resolution on August, I don't know, August 4th or 5th, something like that. You know, I think it, I, you know, I would encourage the school committee to meet as soon as they possibly feel that they can, that they're comfortable to either take action on this or not.
So keep in mind, the earliest you could meet next week is Tuesday for the simple reason that tomorrow's Friday, and you need that 48 hours according to post.
Okay. Well, then it sounds like we would be shooting for a Tuesday, a Tuesday school committee meeting then.
Yeah. Do we need a motion?
Not to schedule a meeting.
No, not to schedule a meeting, Sean. You could, guys can just consent to schedule it. And again, it could be a fully remote meeting.
Okay, I think we should meet on Tuesday as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available.
That's the date. I think it would be going into that meeting, Mark, if at all possible to have a perspective on is it a doable number that we've given them? Because that'll be, that'll be an important part, I think, in terms of how we can move forward.
Okay. So any further discussion on that? Okay, so it sounds like in terms of our objectives tonight, we've reviewed what, what we needed to, from what we've heard back from Mendon. We've discussed some of the new budget information and some of our priorities, and we are going to take the weekend to review the information and talk again on Tuesday. Does that sound right?
Yep.
Brilliant.
All right. Then unless there's any further discussion or information that needs to be shared, at this point, it looks like we're going to I'm sorry, did I hear? At this point, it looks like we'll roll call to executive session pursuant to M G L Chapter 30A, Section 21A, exemption number two, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim superintendent of schools, and the committee will not return to open session.
John Nicholson, aye.
Bill DeZetter, aye.
Earl Brown, aye.
Dorothy Scally, aye.
Vicki Ludwicksen, aye.
Perry Lawrence, aye.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah. And with that, the meeting is adjourned at 7:48.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
You guys don't need me anymore, right?
No, thanks.
Go lay down.
Yeah, I've got something else at eight o'clock, but I'll give my five minutes of laying down in between. It's getting better. I'm sitting more and laying less.
It's a nice pillow.
Which, this here?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I have a whole little setup here. I got my old man walker and everything. You know, the Tim Conway routine when he does the old man shuffle? That's where I'm at. Getting going around the house. All right, good night.
I know a present I can give you now.
Oh, yeah, right. See ya.
Hey, Joe, can you stop the recording too?
I will do that right now.
Thank you.